Hit my, um, RT. And then just tell them I wanna pull that one. Perfect, okay.
All right, let's come to order and welcome to the September meeting of the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District. As always, we begin with a report from our clerk as to any reportable actions taken in closed session.
Mr. President, we accomplished nothing.[59.62][59.62](Laughter).
He means that. All right. At this point, we invite you to stand and join with us in an invocation. The invocation is to be led tonight by me, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Trustee Williams. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet today in a land of freedom. We ask that you grant wisdom to those addressing the board and to those decisions that the board takes tonight. We thank you for allowing us to live in the freest nation on the planet, and we thank you for our small opportunity to contribute towards that democracy. Finally, we ask that you watch over and guide all the men and women in uniform and around the globe who are doing your work in spreading liberty and freedom. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We have a number of resolutions, and I think I will turn it over now to the clerk to do the resolutions, and the chancellor and I will head down to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'd like to ask President Wagner and Chancellor Mather and President Rockmore to come to the podium at this time. We have a resolution honoring Martin McGrogan. Is Martin with us? Martin, would you join the gentlemen at the podium? Whereas, Coach and Professor Martin McGrogan, a member of the faculty at Irvine Valley College since 1991, is a founding member of the college's School of Health Sciences, Physical Education, and Athletics, and continues to teach every semester, in addition to serving as a division chair, assisting in the scheduling, curriculum development, and staffing in all departments within the school. And whereas Professor Mark, Martin McGrogan, as coach of one of the most successful men's soccer programs in the nation at the community college level, ranks second in all-time wins, he is the only head coach in IVC soccer history with nineteen years at the helm and boasts a record of two-hundred-and-fifty-one, one-hundred-and-fifteen, sixty-five, that includes two state titles and a national championship. And whereas Professor Martin McGrogan led the UCI Women's Badminton Team to an undefeated season in 2009, giving the team its first California Community College Athletic Association Championship since 2005. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Professor Martin McGrogan for his outstanding dedication and well-deserved recognition by students and faculty as the Irvine Valley College 2008-2009 Full-Time Professor of the Year.[277.14][277.14](Applause). I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Student, oh, excuse me, Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I guess he doesn't wanna say anything.[306.64][306.64](Laughter). All right.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Professor.
Congratulations.
Will you say a word? Very good.
Not shy enough, I guess.
Just like to thank you very much. Obviously, it's a great honor and a privilege to be a coach, and when we had some of the talented people, we've had representatives, I've been very successful, and it really is an honor to be here, but I'm here for the players who've represented Irvine Valley in the past at both sports, and thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next resolution honors Jeffrey S. Stately, who is not with us this evening, but the resolution will be accepted by Brenda Boran. Brenda, are you with us? Please. Whereas Instructor Jeffrey S. Stately, a member of the Irvine Valley College School of Humanities and Languages Teaching Staff since 2001, has taught a variety of writing courses, primarily Writing One and Writing Two, and is motivated by the opportunity to teach students the power of the written word. And whereas Instructor Jeffrey S. Stately motivated one student to write, quote, "I believe he is very passionate about learning and about students having a great grasp of the English language." And whereas Instructor Jeffrey S. Stately has served IVC and the South Orange County Community College District with great distinction and excellence in teaching for eight years, showing a tremendous commitment to academic excellence. And whereas Instructor Jeffrey S. Stately is highly respected by his colleagues and is recognized by his students for his passion and encouragement. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Instructor Jeffrey S. Stately for his outstanding dedication and well-deserved recognition by students and faculty as the Irvine Valley College 2008-2009 Part-Time Professor of the Year. And I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Thank you for accepting.[466.43][466.43](Applause). Our next resolution honors Louise Jacobs. Louise, if you would join the gentlemen at the podium. Whereas Louise Jacobs, instructor at Irvine Valley College Emeritus Institute for ten years, is recognized for her tremendous contribution to students and music education. And whereas Instructor Louise Jacobs is a professional choral music instructor who has enjoyed teaching choral ensemble, music appreciation, music fundamentals, and for the Love of Music courses for the Irvine Valley College Emeritus Institute. And whereas Instructor Louise Jacobs has developed music arts curriculum with an emphasis on Mexican-American culture for the older adult, and often hosts visiting musicians from around the world, many of whom participate in class activities. And whereas Instructor Louise Jacobs is highly respected by her colleagues and is also recognized as energetic, very knowledgeable, and always uplifting. As one of her students said, quote, "Her vibrant enthusiasm is contagious, and we students find ourselves getting excited about music in general and about pursuing our musical interests outside the classroom," unquote. Therefore, be it resolved that the trustees of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Instructor Louise Jacobs for her outstanding dedication and well-deserved recognition by students and faculty as the Irvine Valley College 2008-2009 Emeritus Professor of the Year. And I so move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Congratulations.[608.33][608.33](Applause).
Thank you very much. It's truly an honor to accept this award. This is actually my thirty-fifth year as an educator for older adults in Orange County and my tenth year with this district, and I can just say how much I love to teach for the Emeritus Institute, educate my students. I'd like to accept this on behalf of all the instructors at the Emeritus Institute and all our wonderful students. Every day when I get up, I'm thrilled to go to work, and I hope to do it for a long time. Thank you.[641.66][641.66](Applause).
Our next resolution honors Tracy McGrann. Tracy was earlier on the 405 freeway, not yet here. I take it. We will hold off on this if we may, Mr. President, until she does arrive. She's on the way, and there's traffic on the 405. But at this time, I'd also like to introduce Professor Larry Perez. Back in May, we presented a board resolution to Larry, but he certainly deserves to be recognized in our group of outstanding professor. He not only is the Saddleback College Professor of the Year, but he was also named the Orange County Community College Professor of the Year by the Orange County Department of Education. We offer our congratulations to Professor Perez, and a round of applause.[700.02][700.02](Applause). Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and let me just add my congratulations to all of the recipients and thank them especially for being here tonight and making the effort to be here tonight. It is truly a pleasure to thank you for the hard work you do from the Emeritus Institute on down to all of our students. It is recognized, very much appreciated at the board level. Sometimes we've seen some things in the press that suggest some people are unhappy, but the bottom line is we know our instructors are doing an absolutely first-rate job on behalf of all of our students at whatever position they are in in their lives, and we thank you all for that. All right, we are at public comments, and I have two requests to speak. We will begin with Brenda Boran's lesser half, Bob Cosgrove.[756.37][756.37](Laughter).
I concur with that.
Wise man.
Bob Cosgrove, Saddleback College. Thank you, President Wagner. I wanted to alert you on an issue related to our accreditation process at Saddleback that I, it's just kind of a red flag right now, and I think we can correct it, I hope, quickly. As we've been working through Standards One, Two, and Four in particular, they have a connection with the matter of ATEP. And what we need is documentation to show where the line of responsibility goes, because one of the two colleges has to have some responsibility. Districts cannot have educational programs that they're offering. So we need to have some flow chart, some clarification, that at some point we can take that material and incorporate it into those three standards at Saddleback. And I think I said that very well, and I want to thank you, President Wagner, because that infusion of wisdom that you invoked in me has just surged forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the other request to speak was taken care of before our closed session. There are no other requests to speak, so we will move now to board reports. And we will begin with Trustee Jay.
Yes, I'd like to mention just one thing, and this is my opinion now. It's nothing official about the board, but I was very, very pleased last week when the President of the Board announced that he was a candidate for Assembly, and I would say that, for the State Assembly. And I would say that in the past, several staff members and board members have sought an Assembly seat, including myself, yours truly here, and none of us were successful. And so I certainly wish you the best of luck, President Wagner, and I'll support you, and I know several other board members will too. And I'm not speaking for anybody officially, I'm saying, but I, in my opinion, is that it's time that somebody from this district who would foot this college and all three locations and campuses in wonderful stead at the state. So we really need you, Don, and thanks.
Thank you very much. I very much appreciate that.
Trustee Patberg, can you top that?
Well, I'm not gonna venture into politics right here, but let me just say that I'll be doing a brief report. I had the pleasure of attending the two 9/11 ceremonies at Saddleback and at IVC, of course, on September 11th. I've also attended two Saddleback College football games and the leadership dinner and received my tenure service pin at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to offer my compliments to my hosts at Irvine Valley College. On 9/11, I only had the opportunity to attend one of the two very fine commemorations of 9/11. I thought the program was particularly meaningful. At Irvine Valley College, where I was able to attend, not only because of the splendid program, but there was a terrific turnout of elected and appointed community leadership officeholders and active community civic participants who recognized the efforts of Irvine Valley College to be present to that important commemoration in our community. And President Rockmore, I salute your fine efforts and that of your staff. I was also wanting to say a kind word to you, Don, and to Raghu. I thought that the fine leadership reception at the Testament Ranch Country Club was a wonderfully unifying occasion. It brought together folks in a great spirit of cooperation, and I thought it was so very well-done. As I have mentioned to some of you, on that occasion, Bill Hewitt even gave me a hug. So I think we're making great progress in this district. I want to share with you a little report from the Orange County Legislative Task Force. The new legislative year is beginning with the North Orange County Community College District serving as the host for our county's Legislative Task Force. Presently, at our meeting this month, we reviewed the calendar for the upcoming year of our agenda and meetings, our mission and the priorities for state and federal policy issues, and engaged in a very good discussion. Our focus will continue to be on regulatory relief, improving student transfer options, and support for career technical education programs. While I have the opportunity to be the representative of our board in that body, really, it's Chancellor Mather and Tracy Daly who do yeoman's work in preparation for those sessions and the expressions of the opinions and information from our district, and I commend them. Thank you.
I have no report. Thank you.
Let me take just a second to compliment both presidents on their 9/11 ceremonies. I have heard absolutely wonderful reports out of Saddleback. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but the praise has been effusive, and I think, obviously, President Burnett, you deserve a lion's share of the credit, you and the team that put that program on, and so thank you very much for that. And also, President Rockmore, I did have an opportunity to attend your very moving ceremony, and I want to thank you for drawing community leaders out and getting an absolutely wonderful turnout. Thank you, gentlemen, both, for a fine and sobering presentation. And then let me also follow up on something from Trustee Fuentes. I also had an opportunity to attend the district leadership meeting, and it is to Raghu's credit and Tracy Daly's credit and the team that put on just an absolutely wonderful program. All I did was serve as emcee, and that means I read the words that they put together. They did the hard work, and that hard work paid off. It was a great opportunity to be with district leadership and to thank them for the job that district leadership has done for years and we know will continue to do for years to come on behalf of our students. So thank you all for that fine effort and the opportunity to participate with you. All right, Trustee Milchiker.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to meet with two professors on the Saddleback College campus that are the co-creators and actually the people that are leading the charge to create and to complete the Veterans Memorial sculpture on our Saddleback College campus. And I would just, at this point, like to invite everyone and to urge everyone to come to a new annual event that's coming up. It's going to be the Saddleback College Veterans Memorial Annual Fundraiser, and that will be coming up on November the 18th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., and it will be a chili cook-off. And for $25, you'll get a bowl of chili, you'll get the Keep the Bowl, which is made by one of our fabulous ceramics students, or the ceramics professor, Professor White, and he's a very, very well-known professor of ceramics. We have a wonderful department. And chili and cornbread and salad, and you'll also get two tickets for beer or wine. So, and our wonderful jazz band from Saddleback College will be playing hits from the World War II era. So I plan to bring my husband and do some dancing, because we've taken a swing dancing class, so just come to see that. It should be a lot of fun. There'll be, the money that's being raised, there's a, they, I had an opportunity to take a private tour of the Veterans Memorial sculpture, and it's really unique to have this kind of sculpture on a community college campus. It was hand-created by two professors, Professor White and Professor Fred Olson, who's a very well-known ceramics artist. And in the middle is a cutout of a soldier, and it does not define any soldier's gender or their rank or their, any position that they held in the military, or whether they were in the Army, Navy, or Marines, but it's meant to represent all the military. And on the outside will be a waterfall coming down, one coming down one side, one coming down the other side, and water coming down around the edges. And there are benches all around it, in the middle of it, and there are little holes in the actual ceramic tiles that are being created, and these are to kind of echo the holes that are in the Vietnam Memorial in Washington, D.C. So people can put little messages in the holes for some servicemen or women that they remember. And it's fired very uniquely with a different kind of clay and immediate firing. It's very unique, and it will be a place for students to sit and contemplate and relax right in the middle of our quad, and I think you'll be very proud of it when you see it finished. So I urge you all to support this event, and when the memorial is paid off, then the money will go for veterans' families and the people that serve our country's families. And it's a worthwhile event, so recommend it highly. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Thank you, President Wagner. Just a few items here. Wanted to appreciate Trustee Patberg's representation at the Saddleback 9/11 ceremony. I had a foot out the door and received a phone call, so wasn't able to attend that. Also wanted to echo Trustee Fuentes's and Wagner's remarks regarding the IVC ceremony as well as the district leadership reception. Terrific events. I did have a chance to attend IVC's A300 remodel grand unveiling, and terrific job, Glenn. I appreciated the private tour from you as well as from Vice President Craig Justice and others that accompanied us, and I think that'll be just a wonderful addition to the fine arts at IVC. And finally, I just want to do, wish a happy Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur to all our Jewish constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bailey.
My report is brief as well. I attended both of the SC football games as well as President Burnett's annual State of College breakfast, which was very nice. Thank you for inviting me, and that's all.
Thank you. And Chancellor Mather.
Thank you. Both the 9/11 ceremonies were excellent, and I'd like to thank President Rockmore and President Burnett. I was able to attend both of them, and I would particularly like to take this moment to draw your attention to a speech that Professor Bob Cosgrove gave on the 9/11 occasion, commemoration occasion that day, and I've shared that speech with the board members. And I thought Professor Cosgrove, by giving that speech that he gave, played an excellent professorial role model for these students. And Trustee Fuentes, as you mentioned, that Professor Bill Hewitt gave you a hug. Professor Bob Cosgrove and I had an opportunity to have lunch together, and I enjoyed it very much, and this time Bob paid, next time I will. Now, with respect to the leadership reception, I'd like to thank both President Wagner for being the emcee and the trustees, Fuentes, Marsha Milch, I mean, Trustee Nancy Patberg and Dave Lang, who were able to attend. Now, those of you who were not able to attend, we had presented a certificate of appreciation to all the trustees for your leadership, for your hard work on behalf of these students and the taxpayers of the communities, and therefore, at this time, I'd like to present the certificate of appreciation to all the three other trustees who were not able to attend. And I'll start with Trustee Bill Jay, because you also qualified for a five-year service pin. So here's the service pin and the certificate for you.[1571.87][1571.87](Applause).
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a similar certificate.
The other thirty years that I was a staff member here don't count.
This is trustee service. You're a long-term employee of the district, and you served as a professor and administrator.
I'm just kidding.
Right, right. And I have a certificate of appreciation for trustee, Vice President of the Board, John Williams.
Thank you.[1606.12][1606.12](Applause).
And also, last but not the least, it's my pleasure to present a certificate of appreciation to Trustee Marsha Milchiker. Thank you.
All right. We are to board requests for report, and I understand there is one written request?
I believe there are two.
Two, all right.
As listed on the agenda, we have received two requests for report from Trustee Patberg. One is on Saddleback College's film program, and the other one is on the Saddleback College's Communication Arts Program. And I've talked to the staff about this. It will take a couple of months to prepare a comprehensive report. There's a lot of data involved in this, so I anticipate that we can bring back a report at the November board meeting.
All right.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Trustee Patberg, would you like to address the item now that we've voted?
Sure.
Both at once, yes. All right, they are approved unanimously. Thank you all. Item 4.0, or 4.1 actually, is our monthly discussion item. It's regarding the strategic planning process, and at this point, let me turn it over to the chancellor to introduce the item.
Thank you very much. According to the state requirements, we are supposed to prepare data on a student or the college's accountability in terms of student success, and there are a number of indicators by which we measure student success and thus college's success. And so tonight, we have reports from both the colleges, from President Rockmore of Irvine Valley College and President Todd Burnett from Saddleback College. Gentlemen, who is up first? Please step forward. Thank you.
I think that would be me, although the introduction I thought was going to be done by Vice Chancellor Bermuda. But I will do that.
Let me call upon Vice Chancellor Bermuda to do that appropriate introduction, and then you can follow.
Each year, we submit the ARC report and the institutional effectiveness reports, so I would like to call upon our distinguished presidents, beginning with President Glenn Rockmore, to be followed by President Todd Burnett.
We were expecting better.[1759.16][1759.16](Laughter).
After that? Angel at least.
Okay, well, it looks like I have the background here for you that you have here on your screen talking about what the ARC actually is. That's the accountability reporting for community colleges. We are required to share this report with you on an annual basis, and we're very happy to do so. And what you have before you are the code sections that support that. At Irvine Valley College, first of all, you're going to see a number of charts here, and I'll go through them relatively quickly. The first category is in degree certificate and trans- The first category is in degree certificate and transfer performance. So this is looking at student progress and the achievement rates. So you can read the details of that inside. But what you see for our degree certificate and transfer throughout the years shown is that we do have a slight drop this year. And we think that that is probably due to the fact of the economy, and we're getting a great number of students who are coming to us for a course or two to upgrade their skills, rather than seek a degree certificate or transfer. The next one are those students who have indicated that they were going to earn 30 units or more, and in fact, have done that. And you see here that throughout the years, there's a little bit of fluctuation. This is within the noise, but we happen to be up just slightly in this period. Persistent rate, that's where the students start with us, say, in a fall term, and then are still enrolled in the following fall term. And here, you see that we are, again, I think, within some noise in the data, but showing a slight increase for this particular year. In vocational, occupational, and workforce development, in this case, having successful course completion rates in those areas. We, again, just hovering around a few small percentage points here, but we are showing 71.9 this year, a slight reduction, and probably due to the fact that we are revamping this program, largely to help support ATAP. And then in basic skills, this, again, is successful course completion in our basic skills. And we are, again, just about straight across the board, 72% on that particular indicator. ESL, English as a Second Language. Again, looking at two breakdowns of this, somewhat related, but it's the ESL rates here, ranging from 23% to now 21%. And then basic skills, as an improvement rate, is hovering in the high 60s as an average there. Now, I guess, being the first one up, I get the opportunity to try to explain this to you. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. But when the ARC data is put together, we're compared to cohorts. And so you wouldn't want to think about this as our college is being compared to all of the colleges in the state. That's not the case. The state determines what that cohort's going to be, and that cohort will be different. As you see on the right-hand column there, it will be different for whichever measure is being looked at. But you can look across this and see how we compare among our own rate, the colleges' rate, how we look compared to the peer group average, peer group low, peer group high across those numbers. Better way to look at this is through a summary here. So Irvine Valley College's accountability indicators in the ARC 2009 report demonstrate above-average performance in four out of seven indicators when compared to the peer institutions. IVC is a peer group high, actually, in one indicator, that's student progress, achievement rate, and improvement rate for basic skills. While the student persistent rate and the percent of students who earned at least 30 units, basic skills completion rate, and the student progress and achievement rate have each remained stable and relatively high, the vocational completion rate and course improvement rates for ESL have actually declined. The Basic Skills Initiative process is addressing the needs in ESL for staff development, curriculum redesign, and development of an ESL World Languages Student Success Center.
At Saddleback College, we have the same, most of the same indicators, which I'll go over briefly. First, just like IVC, in our degree certificate and transfer rates, you see over the last three measures were very constant, in fact, within .3, I believe, or .4 in the last three years. Earning 30 units, once again, extremely consistent, 77, down to about 77% almost. Under persistence rate, which is one of my favorite indicators, we've actually made a slight improvement, up to 74.5%. Under our career technical, which is vocational, occupational, workforce development rates, we... Successful completion rates, we are up to 76.2%, which I think is quite allotable. Under basic skills, our annual successful course completion rate, once again, is fairly stable, within the noise, as Glenn would say, around 62%. At Saddleback, we have English as a Second Language as well, and our progress and achievement rate is up a half a percent, up to 14% from the prior period. Also, we are also compared with our cohorts as well. And I would note that we are not necessarily the same cohort as IVC, for your own knowledge there. And with that, Saddleback College has demonstrated above-average performance levels on all but two of the accountability indicators. While the college is below the peer group average in the improvement rate for credit basic skills courses, it has shown growth over the previous year's rate. In the annual successful course completion rate for credit basic skills courses, while the performance is below the peer group average, the margin narrows when compared to the previous year. College departments are reviewing their student learning outcomes and are confident this gap will be bridged in the near future. Saddleback College continues to have a strong persistence rate of 74.5%, with 76.6% of students earning more than 30 credits. The annual successful course completion rate for credit vocational courses is a commendable 76.2%. Overall, when compared to peer institutions, Saddleback College's accountability indicators demonstrate a solid and healthy performance with a strong balance of academic and career-oriented programs. Saddleback College is proud to continue the task of fulfilling the mission of the California Community College system.
Do we have any questions? Thank you. Gentlemen, and Trustee Milchaker.
Yes, actually, the performance indicators are excellent for both colleges. With regard to not being the top in the greatest improvement, I remember when my son brought home the student of the month for greatest improvement from grade school, and I thought they were just throwing him a bone. So I don't think greatest improvement is that important, because we're already up there, so we don't need to improve. We still need to improve, but it's not one of the highest indicators. How do they group the colleges into peer groups? You said Saddleback College and Irvine Valley are in different peer groups, and I'm just wondering...
We're going like this.
Well, it's funny that you ask.
Okay, thank you. That's quite a question.
The state has actually come up with actually an algorithm, a formula, where they use all kinds of criteria to come up with and put all the 110 community colleges in a particular peer group category that are supposedly based on similar-like information. Rather than just look at the institutions, they look at the particular indicators. So if they're looking at English as a Second Language, as an example, or ours was actually what's called enhanced non-credit, where, interestingly enough, IVC actually doesn't even have those classes. We do. It wouldn't be very fair to compare our two institutions. So they put us with a peer group, for instance, at another institution that actually has those type of classes and is similar to our profile.
Thank you.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you. The President Burnett, on the Saddleback College self-assessment, I guess, report that was written here, in the second-to-last paragraph, you kind of allude to the fact that we believe we're going to be able to make some progress, those areas that we... It looks like we really were below the average. But it really didn't specifically say you're going to bridge the gap in the near future. That left me a little with a little vague feeling in terms of what actual action steps we're taking to get there. And I'm wondering if you might be able to share any of that with me.
Sure. Well, first, the two indicators you're talking about are both basic skills-related. And I will say, first notice that this was from '07-'08, so we already have another year and a half-plus that we've been working on. I will say that the faculty at Saddleback College, along with the ministers and managers, have done a fantastic job with our new Basic Skills Initiative. So I'm hoping that those efforts are going to pay off. I will say, though, I believe, and I saw Bob, the president of our Academic Senate, raise his hand if he wants to say something, but I can say, one of the things that he might mention is that we believe we still have a ways to go. And even though the indicators are okay, and we're making progress, I think that's the important thing, is look at the progress that was made. I want to say I'm totally confident, but I'm pretty sure that next year, the '08-'09 numbers will probably be an improvement again. And I think that's the most important thing, is continuing that improvement.
Thank you. I'd welcome any comments that anybody else... Hang on, hang on. I think President Rockmore wants to finish addressing that.
I would just like to quickly remind us, and I think Bob Bermuda would echo this, and it's related to the data and what this really means. This report is a very good guideline and data piece for us to put into our strategic planning. The reason is that if we were actually with a standard, if we had a value that didn't change, so if we had the same students all the time, then we could look at these as changes that could relate to what we're doing or not doing. But the fact is, that changes all the time. That cohort, that demographic, is changing. So many of these numbers are actually a reflection of new students coming into the system with different skills. And so if we look at it that way, it is an important data piece. It does help us make decisions, but it's not a good data piece for direct analysis of performance.
Thank you. Professor Cosgrove.
Thank you. I'd like to echo what President Rockmore just said, that we have different populations coming in. And one of the things that would be of benefit to both schools is that turning away students at CSU system and other community colleges in our area and UCI will send a number of these students who are really qualified, well-qualified, to come here. We will continue to get students who are less qualified, partly because of the recession, students in the elementary and secondary grades as they move up. If there are larger classes and fewer teachers and fewer services, it will make it more difficult for those students. And then when we get them, we will find that their skills may in fact be lower. We're trying, through our Basic Skill Initiative, to make this part of our institution and to make certain that our students do well, because our teachers are well-trained. And I attended a session this afternoon with Bruce Gilman in the English Department. There were 15 faculty members, part-time and full-time, from various divisions across the campus. And I just kind of tallied quickly, if something really happened in that session, I think it did, that helped those teachers to get some ideas that would make it better for their students, especially the basic skill students, that would touch over 900 students in the basic skills classes that we are offering. And that's a lot when it ripples out. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions. I'll note, despite my introduction, this had nothing to do with strategic planning process, but there is a replacement page up here for the trustees doing... Putting it outright. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all. We are at the consent calendar, and let me inquire of my colleagues whether there are items to remove. Well, all right, Trustee Milchaker.
I'm in 5.5C. 5.5.
Okay. 5.5 and 5.6. Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
5.15.
5.15.
Move the balance?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We are pulling items 5.5, 5.6, and 5.15. The balance is...
5.16.
Oh, not 5.6.
5.16.
1.6, my mistake. Thank you. 5.16, sorry about that. All right, 5.5, 5.15, and 5.16. The balance has been moved and seconded. Let's vote on the items. And the consent calendar passes unanimously with the exception of those three items. We'll start with 5.5, removed by Trustee Milchaker.
Yes, this is a request for... Because all... From Saddleback College, for speakers that they're going to be having at Saddleback College. And in the past, I recall that we've had, along with the speakers and the topic and the cost to the college, which is very minimal, there was also, in the item, the faculty member that requested it, and the location and the time. And since all of these speakers are open to the public, perhaps some of the Board of Trustees members would like to attend some of these speakers. And I would like to request if we could put in the requesting faculty member and perhaps the room and the time, so that the trustees or the members of the public or other people reading the agenda are able to attend some of these very fine speakers. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Padberg.
Well, I would just echo exactly what you said. I think this matter ought to come back to us with that kind of detail. It's been there in the past, and we need to see that when we vote on it. Thank you.
We'd be happy to do that.
So could we have... I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Thank you.
It's a non-debatable motion to table.
Oh.
So let's vote on the tabling motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's a non-debatable motion, so why don't you do what I do and vote against it and hope a majority of your colleagues will agree? Then we can debate it, and then we can entertain the motion.
Okay, I'll vote against it. Can I... I'll withdraw my second, okay? Because I...
Not necessary. The motion to table has failed.
Okay.
All right, so further discussion. Trustee Lang.
Yes. Pardon me. My comment is, is that I notice that we are already past the date of presentation... Or, yeah, presentation of a number of these items. And I'm thinking that it might be a good idea, perhaps, to separate the motion and approve the ones that have already occurred, and then table those that have not occurred.
Well, do you want to table the ones that have not occurred? Or do you want to...
Yes.
Let me ask, or table the ones that will...
Would not occur before our next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. You're more articulate.
I will make that motion.
All right, thank you. And is there a second to that motion?
Comments?
Okay, motion is seconded. What's that?
I was going to make comment rather than table it again.
All right.
I want to have a little dialogue.
No, no, I have.
No, that was not a motion to table. That was a motion to divide the question.
Oh, excuse me.
That was not to table. So debate continues. Trustee Milchaker.
Yes, some of these... Some of these speakers did actually finish speaking. For instance, the speaker that is the artist for the gallery, the wonderful show at the art gallery, Bones and Branches, very interesting presentation. And I would like to see these next time, prior to the presentation, so that would give us everyone an opportunity to attend these wonderful events. Also, I would like to ask the college president, if some of these events already happening happened, if tabling this will in any way hamper the ability to get these speakers for the college.
Either one? I'll address that. Well, first, the big part here is for the ones that are honorariums. I think those are the ones really that's being approved for. Right, am I correct? So the ones that are coming up, and there are some key ones, yes, because I believe the board meeting's after almost all of these, except for the ones in November for the next board meeting, if that's what you're tabling until.
Yeah, but I noticed... I think my microphone was on, I apologize. But I noticed that some of these items have already occurred, particularly an artist presentation about the wonderful exhibit at the art gallery. And so I'm just wondering how important it is to get approval prior to these speakers, because if they've already occurred and we're approving them after the speaker has spoken, then it probably... The fact that the board approves them isn't really of that great importance prior to their speaking.
I think you raise a good question. I think, actually, I'd like to defer to my chancellor.
And that's the reason, I think, for the motion, which is to divide the question and go ahead and approve what has already come and gone, and we will get the additional information and the next board meeting approve or not the remaining items. Let me turn to the chancellor.
Thank you. Per board policy, Trustee Milchaker, the main thing that you are really approving, or the main thing that the board acts upon, is the honorarium. This policy, when it was developed, it was developed at the consultation of the county council and per county council, not county council, our district's council, that we are not asking the board to approve these speakers, because then we're talking about speaker and the content issue and so forth. Now, if the board is interested in knowing who these speakers are, when the events will be held, so that the board members may attend, we can prepare the agenda item accordingly in the future, and that we will be happy to do.
If I could add one thing?
Yes, sir.
I would like to add that there is one speaker here in particular. Actually, we're very proud and excited for it, is on October 20th, Jim Kuzis, who is Kuz and Poizner, if you've heard of him, really one of the absolute worldwide preeminent speakers in leadership. In fact, you will all be getting invitations on this. It is incredible to only have to pay $1,000 for this particular speaker who commands $10,000 to $20,000 in engagement. But it's a big event for us. We'll be attending right here, actually. We'll be ten, right here, actually, in this boardroom. So, that is one thing I might add, only because this is such a high-profile speaker.
Thank you. Trustee Padberg.
Could I inquire of our chancellor why we did not get the September speakers, or this request, in time to approve it before they actually spoke?
That's an excellent question, and here's the answer, because, again, per board policy, we are not anticipating asking the board to approve the speakers, but the compensation. The understanding is that whenever we bring any speaker, the colleges have the understanding with these speakers that if they are to be paid any honorarium, they will be paid only after the board has approved the honorarium. So, from that perspective, it didn't matter when we brought this to the board for approval. However, I think what I heard from trustee Milczek in particular was that you'd like to know as to when the speakers will be speaking on any given topic, so that if the trustees were interested in attending any of these events, you could. And we'll be happy to develop the agenda item with that in mind for the future.
Trustee Fuentes.
Marsha, you said a number of items there that all interested me, and I want to make sure we're capturing all of them. They were when they're going to speak and where they're going to speak, and what teacher requested that they speak?
Yes.
And what were the other things you mentioned?
That's, in a nutshell, that's exactly what I requested, when they're going to speak, and which professor requested them to speak, and where they're going to speak. That's what I was interested in, considering or getting that information.
And maybe a... If it's appropriate, what department of the college or division would it be serving, this particular speech? I think all those are informative things for us to consider.
Sure.
Thank you.
The motion on the table is to divide the question. I trust that that's not one that will have any objections, so let's go ahead and divide the question. Seeing no further discussions, let's vote on all of the items that are on page one of the exhibit, which go through 10, 2209, since the board will not meet prior to those events taking place, and some of them have already taken place. Trustee Milczek. All right. That is approved unanimously. Now, let's consider, I'll entertain a motion to, I'll entertain a motion as to the balance of the items.
President, I would move to refer the matters to the chancellor for further information.
Seconded. All right. Let's vote on that item. Trustees Jay Milczek and Lang, please. Trustee Lang. And that is, that also is carried, and we'll get that item back next month with the information. Thank you. We are at item 5.15.
Move approval.
Second.
This was pulled by trustee Bailey, I assume for purposes of abstaining. Would you like to address the item, or no? All right. Moved and seconded. Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously with one abstention, and we are at item 5.16, which was pulled by trustee Padberg, and this is requests, trustee requests for attending conferences. Trustee Padberg.
I pull this item every year. I think it's a very expensive conference to go to, and I'll vote no on it.
Is there a motion with respect to the item?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on the item. Matter carries with one no vote. We are now through the consent calendar. We are at item 6.1, which is the contract proposal with Nudisic LLC for software development and enhancements.
Move approval.
Moving seconded. Discussion? Let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.2 is our basic aid priority list.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Trustee Lang, please. All right. Matter carries with one no vote. Item 6.3, board policy revisions. This is here for discussion and/or approval. I will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Approval as opposed to discussion?
Acceptance.
Acceptance for discussion or acceptance for approval?
Move to approve.
Cut to the chase. Very good. Is there a second to the motion to approve? Moved and seconded. Discussion?
I can live with them.
Seeing no discussion, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.4...
Move to accept for review and study.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let me inquire, please, of the chancellor with respect to, or administration, I know this is Gary, he's policy committee, with respect to the smoking policy, 40.14. What is state law on this subject?
There is state law regarding smoking a certain distance from the entrance of a public building. 20 feet, I think it is.
Are we, is this policy more restrictive or less restrictive? Well, it can't be less.
With regard to that, it's the same. But there's quite a debate that's been going on at the colleges about whether there should be smoking at all, and discussion within the colleges. And what this proposed policy does is leave it up to the individual campus to make a determination of what they want to do there. And so it's up to each of the presidents and the ATEP provosts and their staffs and students to discuss this and decide what they want to do at each campus.
All right.
So, that's what this is intended to do. It also wraps into it the vehicles that that's considered to be property of the college and that any smoking policy pertains to that also.
Okay. For what it's worth, and this is just here for discussion, or for review and study, when this comes back to us, I will vote against any policy that is more restrictive than the absolute minimums required of us for state law. We are adults and should be treated like adults, and I would like that idea to govern the presidents in making their decisions, and I will oppose any thing that is more restrictive than state law requires. Yes, sir.
Okay. This policy would not put any restrictions on smoking. This policy leaves it up to the college.
I understand. And what I'm saying is, if this comes back to us in this format, and it leaves it up to the college presidents, I will oppose it because I don't want them to have the discretion to do absolutely more than is required by state law to infringe the liberties of adults on our campuses. Trustee Padberg.
I tend to support your position, trustee Wagner. However, I do think that, and you can check me if I'm wrong, state law does require that the 25 feet be marked very clearly, and that should be maybe added to this policy after enclosed, clearly marked. Of course, each college president has to come up with their own rules and regulations, but that needs to be a part of it. The 25-foot distance needs to be marked from every entrance door. In addition, what I see is a problem besides the health problem, but the people can make those decisions themselves, are the littering. And I happened one time to go outside McKinney College, and there were so many cigarette butts, I guess that's where they spend their time in between acts or scenes or whatever. And they were all over the ground, and I think I proceeded to pick up about 200 of them. There needs to be something in this that addresses the inappropriate disposition of cigarettes, not only for safety purposes and fire hazard, but in terms of littering. So, those are just my thoughts. And if you could check the state law, I do believe the state law requires that the distance be marked from the entrance, so people know where the 25 feet is.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you. I would be opposed to it, but on a little different grounds. I think that it's, I would have a problem leaving it up to specific college president discretion regarding policy on their campus. I think there ought to be a district policy that governs, and my own personal preference, frankly, would be to see this be a smoke-free district, however. And I would support that policy, by the way. However, you know, as I said, the way this is written would be problematic for me.
Thank you. Trustee Fuentes.
Well, I certainly want a grandfather in cigars. And, holding for my long record of advocacy of shared governance, I'm going to seek the wisdom of the Faculty Association in this matter, and we will convene and discuss our recommendation.
Probably kill a few cigars in the process. Very, very well. All right. Seeing no further discussion, let's vote on the item for review and study. And it is accepted for review and study. Item 6.5, academic personnel action items, and it is here for approval.
Move approval.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.6, classified personnel action items, and...
Vote.
Moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Seeing none, we vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.7, an award of a bid for life insurance.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Trustee Williams.
I just wanted to, I believe this is under, David, this is under your shot?
Yes.
Thank you again for always looking out for ways to save the district money on health and welfare benefits. This is a big premium savings, correct?
It is, yes.
Yes. So, we need to give credit where credit is due. Thank you.
Good catch. Good call. Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Matter carries unanimously. All right. We are to our information items, and I'll go through them quickly. Stop me if you have questions or want to discuss any of this. 7.1, the basic aid report. Item 7.2, the facilities plan status report. Item 7.3, the list of board requested reports. And item 7.4, the monthly financial status report. We go through those very quickly, but thank you to Deputy Chancellor Porter and his team for giving us all this financial information every month. We do appreciate it. All right. We are at the written reports festivities of the evening, and let's start with President Burnett.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President. First, we have a wonderful person with us here today, and I'd like to congratulate Dean Jim Wright for being the chancellor's administrator of the year. Congratulations. I'd also like to give a great deal of credit to Chief Harry Palmer, who actually was the one who led and organized and actually administered the 9/11 ceremony. So, thank you, chief. Second on your... I just lost 20 seconds. I put on your thing. I'm very pleased to say we have a brand-new Fast Facts on the college, which will pride you right at your thumb tip here, all good details about Saddleback College, which will be very helpful to you, as well as our community and everybody else. Second, another brochure we have out there is, we have the new brochure, actually the first brochure for the president's club through the foundation. We had a great first event, annual state of the college breakfast yesterday. Thank you, trustee Bailey, for attending. It was quite successful with our community. I'd also like to thank the chancellor for being there as well. Finally, we have a homecoming coming up. Everybody should, October 10th. We have a special presentation. Got a beautiful brochure here. Saddleback College football is doing exceptionally well. We'll find out against Mount SAC on Saturday how well we really are. The foundation gala, just for your calendars, is November 7th. And finally, I'd like to thank the board and the chancellor for recognizing the extraordinary needs for scheduled maintenance of Saddleback's college's aging campus. So, thank you very much for the very generous $8 million scheduled maintenance allocation. Thank you.
Thank you. President Rockmore.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, trustee Fuentes has stepped out. I'm wanting to thank him for emceeing, doing a wonderful job, emceeing the 9/11 event at Irvine Valley College. He always does a fine job in that role. And also trustee Wagner for his speech representing the board of trustees was very heartfelt and very appropriate. Also, you're going to hear from her very soon. Lisa Davis Allen is joining us at front table as our new academic senate president. So, you'll hear from her a bit. Congratulations to you. I would also like to thank trustee Lang for joining us at IBC for our couple-hour tour. We didn't get shipwrecked or anything, but just taking a look at how we've sort of spit things up, added some paint, and made things a little bit more appropriate for our music program. And then I, too, would like to send off my deep appreciations for, appreciation for your funding the basic aid scheduled maintenance for Irvine Valley College. Appreciate it very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Provost Peetls.
Thank you. I would also like to thank both the presidents for invitation to the, both of the 9/11 events, as me and ATEP staff attended those. It was greatly appreciated. Just a note that, in meeting with Executive Director Vitalink, looking toward a possible long-range planning and career exploration partnership with ATEP and the colleges, as Vitalink helps high school juniors and seniors explore careers and potential connections to colleges. And other matters, our ATEP dean, Rocky Sifoni, visited a number of campuses this last month as he's explored and looked at programs locally that we might be able to leverage and get information for new, expanded, or possibly new or expanded programs. And Dean Sifoni and I will now be meeting with the deans and faculty of the colleges to share that information. Continued improvements on the ATEP website, we now have a link called Fun Stuff, which is interesting, but especially it's interesting because it has a new student photo gallery, promotional video, and a student spotlight. Several program areas have been added to the website to help students identify certificate areas also. And finally, our CAC with our new director is moving forward for the creation of a new consortium called the Southern California Precision Optics Consortium, which is a group of local leaders that will help support our programs.
Thank you.
One other item, if I may. Also, I was in attendance earlier this week with some of ATEP staff to the city of Tustin. And Tustin and the Orange County put together a 30-minute film, which was really pretty interesting, which I will be sending through the chancellor, a link, so you could view that. But it was called The Titans of History. It was about basically the blimp hangars at the Tustin legacy area, how they were built, and it was a very nice documentary, and we'll get that information to you. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the IVC Academic Senate, President Allen.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Rockmore for his introduction and his welcome. It's much appreciated. And then, secondly, my apologies for my late arrival. Thursdays are typically filled with IVC Academic Senate business as well as meetings. And of course, we all know the difficulties between the campuses on the 405 at this time of day. So, again, my apologies. I want to thank you for the opportunity to report to the board on behalf of the IVC Academic Senate. And tonight, we only have one item to report. Earlier today, in our council meeting, the IVC Academic Senate approved the 2010, 2011 full-time faculty hiring priority list. With that now under our belts, so to speak, we will now send that, or forward it, to the college administration as our recommendation. I'd like to add to that, we're very much looking forward to the process and are, of course, eager to participate. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Saddleback Academic Senate, President Cosgrove.
Thank you, sir. Our prioritization group will meet on Monday afternoon. I'd like to recognize Wendy Gabrielli for her years of service and to thank her for the work she's done with Saddleback and for all of the faculty and students. And on the issue of hiring, our replacement matter of the faculty who retire or depart us in some way, that's automatic and goes very smoothly. An area of new hires, which is always a concern to both colleges, certainly in terms of budgets, we have an opportunity that we probably won't see again. And because of the distress of other colleges, UCI, Cal State Fullerton, our other sister institutions, there's an opportunity here for us because of the shrewdness of the board and the leadership of this district and college. To put this money away in basic aid, we have the benefit of hiring some really outstanding teachers this next year. And to bump the number up a bit, if that's possible, would really allow us to jump-start a number of areas, especially in our career and technical education area, and certainly with ATEP. It takes several years, as you know, to put into place the curriculum for new programs, especially in the technical fields. curriculum for new programs, especially in the technical fields, and then the facilities that are necessary. So, here's a real opportunity for us to pick up some excellent instructors who might not come our way.
Thank you, sir. On behalf of Faculty Association, President Hannity.
Thank you, President Wagner, board members. I'd just like to point out to the board, in accordance with law in our contract, the Faculty Association is currently in the process of surveying the faculty. And in accordance with the law, and again, once again, the contract, we will sunshine that information to the board in preparation for a negotiation for our contract that expires in 2010. Just wanted to make that announcement to you. Finally, in accordance with the president, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, last board meeting, I wanted to, I was going to thank the board for your wisdom in providing the basic aid money for scheduled maintenance, and your wisdom doing so, I'd like to thank you also. Thanks, that's it.
Thank you. On behalf of Saddleback Classified, President Hamilton.
Thank you, President Wagner. It was a pleasure last week to attend the district leadership reception, and I want to thank the chancellor and the board of trustees for that invitation. It was a beautiful ceremony, and I really enjoyed it. Also, this last week, I attended the president's breakfast, and I found it very cordial and inviting, especially with the community leaders that were there, that were enthused about becoming involved with the foundation and the college and the district. During this week, the Classified Senate has taken on looking at the proposed efficiencies report that Saddleback College has at hand. We are going through it, looking at things that maybe we can add some extra ideas of how to help streamline things, how to take and maybe reserve a little bit of money along the way, and make some recommendations on where we might be able to make some additional ideas that could possibly end up within this document at a later time. I'm very proud to say that the Classified Union, CSEA, IBC's, I'm sorry, Classified Senate is also working with us on this, so that we're all on the same page. We're all working together, and we hope that we'll be able to turn in a report to our presidents in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. President Morehouse for CSEA.
I was just basically going to say the same thing, as far as thank you for inviting us to the leadership dinner. It was very, very nice, and we actually stayed a little bit later and had an additional drink and listened to the music while we waited for our cars. So, that was quite nice. And I also wanted to reiterate what Russ said, that CSEA is working extremely well with both Saddleback and Irvine Valley College Classified Senates. We've come together, and we're going to make this year a really good one for us. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And IBC Classified Senate, President May.
Hi, thank you. I'm here representing Angela Mahaney, who asked me to thank the chancellor and the board for including her in last Thursday's district leadership reception and dinner. Angela also wanted to report that she is working with Russ, Saddleback's Classified Senate president, to organize a tour and visit to ATEP in late October. And the next IBC Classified Senate meeting will be next Wednesday, September 30th.
Thank you. Thank you all. We'll see you in October. We stand adjourned.
Shortest meeting ever.
How about that?